All right, welcome everyone. We have another good looking crowd tonight. Tonight we will be on Facebook, live on our Facebook, New Franklin Facebook page. Check us out there if you're not there. And we're getting our committee meetings tonight. We only have two first readings and a second, third, or pending. Ms. Jones, you're up.
Thank you. Resolution number 21-R-45. A resolution affirming the need for the city of New Franklin, 2021 road paving project, and authorizing New Franklin to advertise for sealed bids for additional roads and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And since Ryan isn't here, I'm thinking that you're very bad tonight.
Yeah, if I may. Council had already, previously approved these. And we sent the paving out for bid. We had some alternates. We accepted the, we had a recommendation for the best that Lois did, was North Star. And then because of pricing, we decided, gee, maybe we want to do a few. Well, actually it started out that we found out Green was doing the YM area. And we said, well, since they're back in that neighborhood, maybe we should pay what's left back there. And why don't we just add that on? We talked to North Star, they said, yeah, they don't have the same price. Then we got a little extra aggressive and said, well, you know, that price is so good. We've got some permissive funds. Why don't we add Combat and Hampshire? And so we did, we brought that to you and you approved it. And before anything has got, nothing has gotten started. We had some further discussions about where we, are we able to extend the project without having offered those particular roads for bid? And there's a difference of opinion on that. And quite frankly, the consensus was, I'm sure you're going to be fine. But that's never good enough. Because if in fact, one of the other bidders determined, or felt that they didn't get a fair shot at these additional roads, and together it's about $450,000, then they could bring it to action and theoretically we could be potentially exposed to damages. Any amount of what their lost profit is. So that was the end of that discussion. Once I got that opinion, we put the brakes on the, with North Star. And we're asking you now to allow us to go back out for bidding. Nobody's made any representations. I don't know if North Star will bid at the same price it bid before. Maybe we'll get lucky and some of the others, you know, don't have as much business and they want the business. We are set up to publish, I think we're going to publish Friday?
Well, that was the idea, yes. As long as we, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, in the event that you pass it. So we're going to see if you can pass this tonight. And if we can pass it, you know, if we can bid it on Friday, we'll open the bids in two weeks. The, based on the conversation we've had, we, you know, we expect the numbers to still come in at, you know, very, very close, if not the same as what they were before. And we should then be able to go forward with these projects. So we would see if we could get this passed tonight. It's important that we should.
Does anybody get any questions?
No.
No objection to passing it tonight either. Can I be close to meeting? I don't think I opened the meeting, I apologize. So I think I've been closing at 6:09.
All right, thank you, Judy. All right, I guess Jim is not here this evening. I'll go ahead and open the finance committee. And we'll call it 6:09, 6:09, Jim will be absent. You have a resolution number 21-R-46. A resolution authorizing New Franklin to accept a justice assistance grant for the purchase of six Motorola APX 6000 series radios and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
Yeah, Captain Bickett was going to be here, but he had another commitment, a family commitment to, in Cleveland that he had to be at. So I talked with him and he gave me the rundown. And it is, these are the balance of the radios. This will finish then in terms of the radios that they need. They purposely didn't order these six because they went after a grant to pay for these six. They went after $20,000. We didn't get the full $20,000. We got fourteen, well, the total grant was $14,285.72. The federal share of that under the justice assistance grant is $12,857.14. And our share was going to be the $1,428.58 of that grant amount. The, as it happened, we were fortunate that the, oh gosh, I don't think I gave that one for you. The price between the time that we applied for the grant and the time the grant was awarded actually went down. And the total cost is about $17,000. So our share of the purchase of these radios is going to go to about $4,400. And we're going to receive $12,857 from the government, from the justice grant. So this would allow us to accept that grant money from the justice assistance grant for those six radios. And then Captain Bickett assures me, or tells me that that's it in terms of their needs for radios. I asked him what the shelf life on these is. He says usually at least 15 years. So we should be in good shape with radios for quite a while.
Paul, I guess I'm confused here. Was it originally $14,285 for the radios?
That's the amount we got for the grant. We asked them for 20.
Okay.
And we didn't get the full 20.
Okay.
How they come up with that particular number, I do not know. The number of $14,285. But we asked for 20,000 and this is what they awarded. Usually it's the total of the 14,285 and then it's, you know, our proportionate shares of it.
Our portion of 14,28?
Right.
I thought you said 4,400.
4,400. Well, because it's, the total cost of the radios is going to be about $17,000.
So the cost is more than what it states here?
Exactly. This is the amount of the grants.
Okay.
Okay, so the total amount of the grant was $14,285. And we applied for 20 and they sent back the award and they said that it's a 90/10 match. So they approved a total of $14,285.
So what you're talking about is, this is just a grant?
Exactly.
That you're talking about this?
Right.
There's not talking about the cost of the radio dating?
Yeah.
And that's what confused, I think that was always confusing. I was too, I said, huh.
Yeah, all right.
Because we're all trying to add in our heads quickly.
And it doesn't add, so as far as this legislation is concerned, it don't need amendment, everything?
No, no, I mean, this is all a system. As far as the grant, or an option, gotcha.
I don't see, we don't can't pass it tomorrow?
Oh, yeah. I'd like to see which people have passage on this. Any other questions? Thanks a lot. All right, I'll go ahead and close the finance committee at 6:13. Anything else for anybody else, committees? All right, I'll go ahead and call it over to City of New Franklin. This is City Council meeting, Wednesday, July 7, 2021. And 6:14, please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as all.
Thank you, roll call please.
Mr. Hargit? Ms. Jones? Present. Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I have to make a motion to approve the amendments from the scheduled meeting of June 16, 2021. Second. Any discussion, questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll go into our public comments. Please keep your comments addressed to council and under four minutes. You can go ahead and state your name and your address. All right.
There you go. Hi, I'm Michael Conlon, City of New Franklin. Thank you. Yeah, I'll drop the tea. Great job you guys are doing. I just, I'm going to add that one mathematical correction. We mentioned last meeting, it was the coin that's in the insurance pool of $83,000. Got borrowed down to $81,000.001. There was a variance of 14%, but the actual number is 11% variance from the original costs. That's all I like that.
All right, thank you. Roll call. Any other, anybody else?
I'm Rita Shinsky and I would like to know where we are with the water in New Franklin.
All right.
We are, let's see, I mean, the first phase of the water, and I'm trying not to rehash the whole thing, was an extension of the introduction of water into New Franklin. Our contract for water is through Aqua Ohio. And we received essentially a $4 million grant, a $4 million project that the city doesn't have any obligation for. Ohio EPA picked up half of it and Aqua picked up the other half. And there's no commitments, nobody's required to sign up. If you want it, there's no assessments. If you want the water, it's in front of your house, you can tie in. There's costs involved in that. If you don't want the water, that's fine too. The line currently, they're close to completing installation. There's still a lot of work left to be done in terms of remediation on some of the properties where they haven't dated. But the water, they had water at about Jesebik's Pizza or West Caston. And so they brought the line from there. To Main Street, south on Main Street to East Caston, up to Coleman. North on Coleman to Catalina. Up Catalina to Renninger, and then up Renninger to 93. And then they went north on Renninger, north on 93 to Vanderburg. And they went south on 93 to Grace Church. And they did that, and we, you know, we asked them to do that, those parameters, because that's where the sewer is going to be on 93. And at the time we were having those discussions, we weren't exactly sure. Well, I don't know if we would have undertaken the project. But we tried, we limited it to that because we didn't, at that point it appeared the city was going to have some stake in this. And often the council would have to decide if they wanted to make the financial commitments of the water. It turned out we didn't. So that's, they expect, certainly by fall, the water will be turned on and it'll be up and running.
Well, I look around the corner on Sandra and I want to know when we can expect it. I mean, we've had issues for the last two years, ever since they did the dam work. And we have no water. And there's a couple more people, you know, in New Franklin that have no water.
Well, we can certainly, if you give your name and number before you go.
I've been in contact with Aqua several times.
Yeah, okay. From here, it's tricky. You know, Aqua's, you know, they've got a business model. And their standard business model is that they'll run the water as long as they have at least 60%. You know the story. So you've got to have 60% of the people that are willing to sign up for the water.
I've found them signed up, yeah.
Do you?
Yeah.
Well, then I'm going to, then I'm getting involved. I got a meeting with them later in, because we're trying, we're looking at, we've got an opportunity to do some further expansion on this too. Because we've got some infrastructure money that we might be able to spend. And they wanted it for high school. And so it's in the works. But I know what your needs are down there. So I'll make sure.
Our second issue is sewer. I mean, you know, the drainage thing.
And stormwater?
Yeah, I think I've talked to you, yeah, that before. I put in my own because we've only got one drain on Sandra Avenue. And it's in my neighbor's yard, yeah. So I put in my own.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, there's several neighbors in our neighborhood that have, you know, going into the garages and stuff, so.
So in the heavy rains, you get it.
Right.
And unfortunately.
Well, I don't anymore because I put in my own.
You put your own, yeah. And then again, that's not a unique situation, unfortunately.
Yeah, I had to, I had to, yeah.
I will tell you that that's another area that we're working on. And it's, and there is some more money that's been announced that's going to be available for stormwater as well under the American Rescue Plan Act. That's going to the states and then to the cities. And so we have, we've tried to index the particular stormwater issues in some county. I don't know specifically if we've talked about your specific area.
That was a couple years ago, yeah. I had to do it, yeah.
So those are the kind of things we're hoping to get to. And I think we're going to have a chance to get some more, you know, some money. We've got some, we've got some major, and not to diminish yours, but we've got some that are chronic and really bad. And we know how we can fix them. And it's going to take a few hundred thousand dollars. And so we've got those in the pipeline right now that we're, you know, we're trying to get approval and authorization for. So we're sensitive to it.
Right.
And I'll add you guys to the list. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're Sandra, I'm sorry.
At some point.
Okay. Yeah, they're not too far off of that whole area though, really, yeah?
No, it's close.
No, it's right around the corner.
It's close.
Yeah. Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? Pretty good. All right, again, we're going to discuss two first readings this evening. Go with the resolution number 21-R-45, go.
A resolution affirming the need for the city of New Franklin, 2021 road paving project, and authorizing New Franklin to advertise for sealed bids for additional roads and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second. First and the second, roll call please.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution 21-R-45.
Second. First and second and further discussion. Roll call please.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes 6 to 0. Move the resolution 21-R-46, go.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to accept a justice assistance grant for the purchase of six Motorola APX 6000 series radios and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
Yeah, we discussed this in the finance committee. I have to make a motion to waive this three readings.
Second.
First and second, roll call please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
I have to also make a motion to adopt resolution 21-R-46.
Second.
First and second and discussion. Roll call please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes 6 to 0. I'll take care of our legislation this evening. Again, this is our favorite part of the evening, marriage for.
All right. Well, first of all, we had a great Fourth of July event. And we appreciate all the help that we had. Committee members and volunteers who did a fabulous job. And we think that close to 500 people passed through there over the four hours. And every single time, we had plenty of good reviews. So that event is, and we met tonight, in fact, at that same group to critique it and figure out what we can do to make it, you know, a little better. And there's some great ideas. We're going to have some more games, some more activities. And it was a beautiful day and a beautiful event. And we're getting more and more people now that know where the Tudor House is and are able to come out and enjoy events there. And we were able to promote the, we have two more music nights and two more movie nights coming up. So the next music night is Tuesday. So come on out. And we've got, who do we got? I can't remember. But they're good. And we'll have a couple food trucks and we'll have a good time. And then we got the movies that are going to follow. And I think, I don't know if we mentioned this last time. We did a poll that's to pick the movies and the movie for August is Cool Running. And, you know, I guess that's a cool movie. And then in the, early July, but in the August movie is going to be Doctor Doodle with the animals. And the African Zoo is going to bring the animals out. Yeah, so we'll have some animals out there. And the kids can come out and play with the animals. And then they'll get to watch the animals talk.
Which is the day of the one? Yes, the new plan.
Yeah, yeah.
You would think I'd have looked at it in the next room.
It's on our website. Please, so if you look on our website and know those dates, I apologize. It's going to be a little.
The date is on Tuesday.
And who is the date?
Past time.
Past time, yeah.
Tuesday the 13th.
Yeah.
And then the animals in August, past and.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see, oh, that's not it. Okay, I apologize, I don't have.
It's okay, we'll find it.
All right, okay. All right, Cumbrel Road Bridge, you may have seen the article in the newspaper. So it's going to happen. I'm still doing everything I can to see if we can make it happen this year. And that's not out of the question. But it's going to happen and certainly by the fall of next year. And the benefit, as I mentioned to you last time around, is that not only is Cumbrel Road Bridge going to be repaired, they're going to do some sightline work on Cumbrel Road as well. There's an issue with the sightline as you approach Eastern Road there. And then the improvements to Eastern Road from Cleveland to Assal, that's a big deal. Three years ago, they, we had conversations with Bartman and Norton about the three communities combining to bear the expense of the planning and design for pretty much the very thing that they're going to do. And at that point in time, we were committed because we need, you know, that's our window to 21. And we've got so much land out there, there's potential development. But Bartman was unable to commit at that time. So that didn't happen. And I saw that file and they're waiting for it to happen. Well, now it's happening and we didn't have to kick in. So, you know, we didn't have to spend that money on this. And we're going to get what we're looking for over there. And they expect, they're already doing the planning and design on that whole project. They started with the planning and design at the bridge, so I'm going to try to get the construction started there. So anyway, that's going to happen.
Can I ask who's footing the bill for the Conkle Avenue?
Uh, Norton.
Good, good.
Yeah, and some accounters pitching in. And we spent plenty of time lobbying some accounters.
My dog and I have been following that forever.
Yeah, I know, we believe in.
We've seen it happen, yeah.
So, yeah.
So that's good, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So some accounters making a, they're throwing in $200,000. It's about a $1.3 million project.
Wow.
And there's, New Franklin doesn't have any expense on that.
Just for the, fixing that bridge?
Oh, no, no.
I was going to say, yeah, I was going to say, wait a minute.
Bridge itself is not $200,000.
Yeah, it's $200,000.
Yeah, the rest of the project's about $1 million.
Or they didn't fix it and rock it up.
The, if you've been following, and it's, again, following a bouncing ball, the American Rescue Plan funds that, when they, when they were announced and they were going to be distributed, the first distribution went to what they called entitlement cities and the counties. And those were the cities with the population of more than 50,000 people. There were a few exceptions. Other ways you could be an entitlement city that we didn't meet. So we are non-entitlement city along with most of the rest of Ohio. And it was projected that we would receive about $2.7 million. And then there was a late effort on behalf of the townships to be included in the distribution, which doesn't sound particularly equitable, except they don't always have the same type of expenses that cities do. But they were successful in that. And as a result, everybody got cut about 47%. So we're going to get about $1.4 million. That's what we're told now. We will believe it when it hits the bank. And that'll come in two distributions. So it's significantly less than we thought we would have. And there are, in a lot of ways, more particular constraints on the use of these funds than the CARES Act. And you could really lump it into sewer water in broad hand. It's not going to be paving. It doesn't appear unless there's some huge expansion of it. It's not going to be payable with replacement. And it's either sewer or water. So we're looking, we've already been looking in all three of those areas. And as I mentioned before, you don't unfortunately do much with $1.4 million. I mean, that water line we talked about just to get, that was a $4 million project. And that's about as simple an infrastructure as you've got to get. I don't know, cable might be similar. Anyway. So we're looking at a variety of things. We already were, we're trying to, you know, there's a big pool of state money available for a lot of those things. As of right now, we're just going to have to see what's on the table and how we want to allocate, how we might want to use those funds. But at this point, I'm inclined to think that we'll get involved in spending that, some of those funds on planning and design as opposed to actual construction. Because there was a pool of money that was made available recently, some additional funds the state of Ohio had for sewer and water projects, but they had to be what they call shovel in. The planning and design had to all be done. And we're not close to that. So we may consider some planning and design. And we're thinking already of what it would take to get the sewer. It's going to stop at Grace because of gravity. What it would take to get it to Nimmelso. And then what it would take to get it down to the, to the high school and service some of it. So that's what's going on there. We'll keep you posted as it gets, as it's rolled out. The west side fire station in Melody Village is about 95% ready. And Chief Leslie advised me and the guys, the morale was really high. They're looking forward to it. The feeling is, with no disrespect to Clinton or the combined station, that the level of service and quality of service is going to be superior to what we've been able to provide the west side. So I'm really excited about getting that station back open, over on the west side. And I think that's going to be a good thing for all of us. So I think that's October 1st and our contract runs out with that on the end of September.
I think so.
All right. The tennis courts. We weren't shocked. We got some, the high school, the Manchester local schools donated the land for the courts. And we agreed we would construct the courts. And we would give the schools priority, first of all, to use the tennis courts for their matches. And we've got a strong contingent of pickleball players in New Franklin. And so we had the pickleball courts. We got preliminary pricing on installing those kind of courts. It was around $400,000, but that wasn't all the site prep work and the excavation we do. It was going to be higher. We thought, well, maybe around $600,000. Taking it at $890,000.
Wow.
And not entirely surprising in this environment. Everything is marked up these days. So we have 60 days. Don't they have to hold that bid for 60 days? The lowest bidder. And the second bid was a million. So we, we're looking at some different options. We are, we're considering possibly rebidding. We're considering kind of breaking the project down a little bit and bidding out the site prep first as a separate component. Because we have reason to believe that that might be as much as $300,000 in the total project. Which you wouldn't think, but it is. Through the clearing of the drainage and compacting the dirt and making sure that you've got a site that's sufficient, so. So we may bid that one out separately. We're still in the discussion stage on this. We are waiting for word on the nature work grant, but we don't know about that. They say they'll release that in the fall. I don't know what that means necessarily, but, so we're up for $150,000 on that one. We also applied at the federal level. Each United States senator was able to support a couple different projects in their district. And Jared Brown, we submitted ours to his office. And we had been contacted by his office last week. Asking, asking, is this the amount that, you know, we want to make sure we know what it is you need. Which we asked them for $500,000. So I don't know. Maybe we'll get like it there. The last thing, we're going to make this happen. And the last thing that I want to emphasize on the tennis courts is that every dollar that will be spent on the tennis courts and the pickleball courts will either come from specific grants, or will be paid through the parks funds. So, there's no money that's gonna be diverted for this that we could spend on paving, for instance. There's no money that will be used for this that we could spend on, uh, water, okay? The only other place we could spend it is somewhere else in the parks. Uh, and, uh, and the Parks Commission is behind this. Because, you know, the, the, historically here, we've taken good care of, uh, baseball, you know, and football, and, uh, and haven't done a whole lot for the adults. Uh, and so, and we felt it was time, and they felt it was time, that, that we earmarked that money. So, I never want there to be any confusion about that. Uh, you hear nine hundred thousand dollars, you know, why don't you spend it on paving? We, we can't spend it on that. One way or another, if they decide that they, we'll, we'll see when, how the grants come, we'll see how the bidding comes, we'll decide when we wanna start the project. We already have a hundred and fifty thousand set aside for this in the parks. Um, we could consider financing the balance, and then we'll service that debt out of the parks money, uh, which is about a hundred and fifty thousand a year goes into the parks. So, maybe we would take half of that and service the debt over five or ten years, something like that. Uh, so that's what's going on there. We'll have something specific for you at some point in time for your approval, but we're gonna try to make that happen. We're gonna make that happen. Uh, and lastly, uh, we had some gentlemen, uh, visit us last week, uh, and both are, uh, members of, I don't wanna get this wrong, the Military Order of the Purple Heart. Uh, Larry Emery and Terry Heinzman came and saw us. And, uh, this is a national organization, a state organization, and, uh, they have inquired as to whether New Franklin might want to become a Purple Heart city. Uh, and I told them surely we would. Uh, there's, uh, there's no financial commitment, it's just a matter of, of saying that we wanna honor, uh, the folks that, that live here in Franklin, that have been awarded the Purple Heart. So, uh, we're putting something together, probably later in the fall. Uh, we'll have a proclamation, and we'll have them in, and, uh, they will, uh, they'll do a presentation. Uh, there are some signs, some nice signs that we can post, uh, at the entrance to the city that we're a Purple Heart city. There's a, a number of cities that are already Purple Heart cities, Akron is, Green is, it's, uh, so I, I'm just glad they came and asked. Uh, 'cause it certainly, I think, something, does that make sense to everyone in our council?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll proceed with that. That'll be later in the fall. And that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Paul. Susan?
Um, just to kinda update you on what's going on in the finance department. Uh, you already received a dra, a copy of the draft audit for twenty twenty. Um, that will be finalized when it, once it goes to the auditor, and then, then I will give you a copy, send you a copy of that, and that is something that, you know, obviously anybody can look up on the auditor's website, or, or, um, you know, have access to, but everything looks good. Um, we haven't had any complaints from our auditors, uh, so we're hoping that everything's, uh, going well. And we know it has, 'cause they told us it had. Um, so all that time that we spent on spreadsheets with the care tax money wasn't worth the time. Um, so we're really happy about that. And finally, last week, yeah, beginning of last week, we finally got our award for our twenty nineteen, uh, audits. So, we've got three awards now, so we're really happy about that.
Congratulations, thank you.
And I, I didn't mention that, 'cause we're gonna, uh, I'm gonna make some kind of formal presentation next week.
Great, thank you.
Because that's a really big deal.
And my office, as well as Diane's, are kinda look like they're under construction, because we're in the process of bringing everything that was at our houses back, and it's been coming in in baskets and boxes, so please bear with us. We're trying to get things back where it used to be, but it's, it's gonna take us a little bit of time to get organized, but we're, we're here, so.
All right, thank you, Susan. Old business.
One, one thing on our favorite topic. Uh, Cumbrel Road, we're just down from the, the CASM.
Yeah.
Uh, the revisiting, I was called, um, about the, uh, revisiting that Foley stop.
Foley stop.
And I, I don't know if it wasn't off the table, but, uh, but, again, it came up, just, uh, there, apparently there's a big eighteen team, um, sort of down the pole, and so I guess it really blocks a lot of, uh, as well as people flying.
All right, and we're, we're talking at Cumbrel and Vanderhoff. Uh, no, I, I, I'm certainly open to taking another look at that, uh, once they get it reopened. You know, to this point, and I think the notion's been, people know what's up there now, and you don't really, you only got three-way traffic. Uh, no, we'll take another look at it, for sure.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thanks. Any other old business? How about some new business?
I'm not sure if it's new. We mentioned it once, Paul, about what's going to happen with the, your Manchester old high school is. You had indicated a couple meetings ago that they are not gonna use that for this school, that you didn't know yet what was going to be here.
Is the administration building?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. We've got a meeting coming up, uh, also later this month, with the architect who's doing all the design work for, and the old superintendent and the new superintendent. Uh, and, uh, we're also talking at Aqua and that meeting. But to, to talk about those very things, and to see what their plans are. Um, I, I was advised that they are, uh, that included in that project was the demolition of the, the elementary school. It's been a hazard all along because of the asbestos, so. Uh, and my interest will, clearly they're moving the administration built, out of that building. And what their long-term plans are, we can find out. Uh, and, uh, really the thinking on it is this, that, um, you know, on one hand is, gosh, it's a historic building, and you would think that, you know, gee, we don't wanna lose it, and there's things you can do there.
It's the oldest building we got.
Huh? I tell you, well, we're gonna have some further discussions about that. But, uh, but, you know, it, if you look around the community, you know, the success or lack of success in, in terms of trying to turn some of those old schools into any kind of viable business isn't great.
It has not been great, no.
No.
They could use it as a historical building, period.
Yeah, so that's a possibility.
And do something else with the rest of the land.
But there's also a, a thought, because there's a lot of land there.
There is.
And particularly if Nemo's Cell is gone as well.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, if, if that was, if, if that building was gone, uh, what might you be able to put there instead?
Might have been things if you really looked at it.
And there is among the, you know, it's, it's rainy money, and, uh, yeah, we like to think that. We're trying to make sure some of the falls here is in Franklin. But, uh, one of the other, um, pots of, of funds that's, that's come out of the ARBA from Columbus has to do with, um, the site preservation, uh, demolition of, of buildings, et cetera, that if in fact the idea was to demolish that building, there could be funds available to, to pay for that. Uh, and flatten that out and say, okay, you know, maybe the city acquires title, and we say, okay, you know, you know, who wants to come develop this? What do we do with it? So, we don't, we don't have that now, but that could be a first step for us.
And if you're thinking about the water and sewage, there'd be wonderful.
Yeah, no, it all comes together really nicely.
It does, really.
All right, thank you. Any other new business?
Oh, now I'm glad you said that, uh, 'cause I thought you were gonna mention trash, and I will have a, uh...
You do, I did wanna mention trash.
I'll, I'll.
I see you, Paul.
I'll have a resolution, uh, for you at the next meeting, uh, authorizing us to go out for bids for the, uh, for the trash aggregation.
And that's coming up pretty soon.
Well, it, it, their contract expires at the end of the year, but it's time for us to move on it. And, uh, my intention would be to ask for, you know, the same variety of services they currently offer. I, I haven't heard anything from anybody saying, gee, why can't you offer this? I mean, it seems like the menu that they offer has been sufficient to satisfy everybody's purposes. So, I don't wanna make this more difficult than it is. Uh, I think one of the issues is gonna be, when we put this request proposal together, is, you know, do we ask for a three-year contract? Do we ask for a five-year contract? Are, what are they gonna be willing to bid on? I, I'm meeting with, uh, the folks from Green, uh, later this month, uh, who just went through this process. Uh, their finance director, as Susan and I are, uh, to see what they went through. Because there's, what's happened recently around here is the city's flat, yeah, I mean, Bartlett, yeah, Republic, uh, and they flipped over to, uh, Kimball. Green had Kimball, and they flipped over to Republic. Uh, Republic has been telling us, you know, for three years that the, the bottom dropped out of recycling, and it's costing them a lot of money, and so, uh, but at least, and I think really, like, the good news is that Green just went through it. We know what those prices were. We know what they offered Green. Uh, so, um, yeah, I think we got a pretty good idea. And I'm sure they'll, I'm sure what they offer is not gonna be what we're paying right now, but I think we can hopefully keep it under control by bidding. And then they're not the only two companies out there either, so.
But I do think the contract that you originally did was really good for the tier of the general, so.
Yeah, I agree.
It recovered just about everything.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think there's gonna be discussion either. I've never, on time, had a call sandwich, we had this.
I don't know. I thought we did pretty good on it, quite honest. I thought the city did well on that.
I agree. All right. Uh, so I do have new business, though.
Yeah.
Have you got anything for us? Anything we talked about? Any questions?
I, I just had a question. Uh, like, I will today and answer them. Uh, when I looked at the economic development plan, we had, it was penned in two thousand and four. Um, that's, seems to be a very long time between the initial onset and to where we are today. I think that's the date for two thousand and four. Is there any, any way it can be refreshed and re-bid? Again, I don't know the process of, the effort of the one incident. I don't ever, ever want to diminish someone who's been in this, uh, property. But the age, we've got, we've had, we didn't have COVID. COVID changed how cities operate, communities operate now. And the thing that was missing that I noticed the most was it was a good, it's a very good plan, but it didn't, it wasn't what we'd like to do, but never set the trajectory, how we're going to move forward, and set the critical timeline we wanted to be. So, those are some issues that, that would help, uh, because, again, as we talked about funding, how do we allocate what the dollars are going to be, that allegedly are running from all these wonderful opportunities? Well, because setting timelines, it's a proper timeline based on that, that comprehensive plan, then we can go back into the community and say, hey, these are our holes, and these are the, some of the trajectories we want to hit. So, that's just an idea.
You know, and I always wondered that, that, yeah, you, you, that comprehensive plan was, it was pinned there in oh-four. I haven't looked back at that file not too long ago. I actually contacted the group that did it, in Pottamire out of Columbus. Talked to the, one of the guys who was actually involved in the process. Uh, and, uh, what it would take to sort of revisit and, and, uh, and take another look and, and revise that plan accordingly. Uh, and, uh, we, we looked at numbers that were in the range of eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. That process, last time, we had, we actually did a survey, and, and so it was a pretty intensive process in these bands. Close to a hundred thousand dollars or so on that. Now, that's not to discourage, well, I'll say on that, and, and it's this, that, uh, I agree that, uh, I think that we're gonna want to do that, and I've shifted back and forth a little bit. Uh, that was brought up at one of our citizens advisory panel meetings, and we said, yeah, I did, I said, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Then we had ninety-three kind of moving at a fast pace, and they said, well, maybe we'll do, maybe we'll just do a master plan for ninety-three, rather than try to look at the whole city and, and use those funds on, on that. Uh, and then we had some questions about that, that aspect of it, and a couple other things, a couple, these newer opportunities we have with this additional funding that's coming in. Uh, ninety-three is just one piece. In a lot of ways, it's a small piece of what our potential for development's gonna be. Uh, so, I've actually shifted back in my mind, and I'm gonna mention this to the panel next week, that maybe we go back in that other direction and think about looking at the whole city. Because I think there's an opportunity, uh, for, to get the water and, and, and hopefully the sewer past Grace up to Nemo's Cell, and down Nemo's Cell to the high school, the middle school, the grade school. And I think there's a chance, for the first time, of actually getting water, which is over by Turkey Foot Golf Course. We'd like to get it all the way out to River Associates. Uh, and, uh, that's another, you know, another ripe area for, for potential development. Uh, and thirdly, uh, to find a way to get the water and sewer down to that little industrial section we have down there at Vanderhoff and, uh, and, uh, excuse me, Van Buren and Center. So, I'm back to expanding. And I hope that doesn't disappoint people. But, uh, you know, that's, but I, that's kind of the direction I'm going, that we go, we, we thought about looking at the whole city again.
It, uh, you know, again, the comprehensive plan was well, it was well thought out, and they identified, I mean, who we are, what we are, probably what we're made. But there's, there's some economic factors we have to take into consideration. If we wanna maintain the quality life we have, we still have to have some type of revenues that are generated. Again, I'm not saying we need to build everything up and down.
Right.
We don't want to lose that footprint, we don't want to lose that, that neighborhood, quite admittedly.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, some of the stuff back in two thousand and four that was important was not available, and we didn't have an opportunity to have that. Had that been the case, it would probably include it up and down.
Uh.
It's, 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 it's two months of small days, but at the end of the day, you just mentioned that shovel-ready projects can improve quicker than the ones that don't. Need to do it in the Army. I have a stack of requisition, uh, requisitions ready at the year, the end, the year in funding, because we do have them. And they have to be ready, be ready, and signed, in order for them to go. That's exactly where you are.
Yeah, yeah.
For your plan, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Second of session, Paul?
No.
All right. Make a motion to adjourn. Second, second all favor.
All right.
Let's have it. Next conference meeting will be July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. We'll get the meeting started at six.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.